Take it away.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you have to be way louder.
Okay.
To speak.
Yeah, goodness, there can't be too loud here.
I am Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner with Public Works, and we're here tonight on an update on the citywide Bicycle Master Plan update.
Great, good evening. Hi, my name is Megan Willie Ozdahl, and I'm here with my colleague Joel Schaefer. We're the Tool Design Group, and we're a planning, engineering, and landscape architecture firm that the city has brought on to develop the 2020 San Mateo Bicycle Master Plan update. So I'm excited to be here tonight to provide you with an overview about the project, about our community engagement efforts to date, about the deliverables that we've been working on for the past year or so, and to give you an overview of the proposed bicycle network. We'll also be discussing our key next steps until we'll be seeing you again in February. So, the purpose of the 2020 Bicycle Master Plan update is to update the previous plan that was adopted in 2011. So, from the work that we do and from our research, we know that the most successful way to improve safety and to increase the number of people who are bicycling is to focus on complete connected networks. So what does that mean for San Mateo? So that means that we're really focused on looking at the areas that are stressful to ride in today and thinking about how can we make these areas more comfortable, more connected for people of all ages and all bicycling abilities. So, the plan goals that we have developed are really based on the community, on what the community has to say and what we've been hearing from the community during our engagement efforts. So, I'll speak to this in a bit, but we've had a really robust and strong community engagement effort through public events and through meetings with your Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, as well as a technical advisory group comprised of staff members. And so, from those conversations and conversations that your city staff have with the community all the time throughout their daily work, these are the goals that we really focused on and helped drive the network development for this plan. So, for our community outreach, we really started at the very beginning. So, the first open house we held was in December of 2018. And to, as a complement to the in-person outreach, we also had an online interactive map where people could leave comments. Throughout the planning process, we've been guided by a great group of folks who are part of the Citizen Advisory Group, as well as the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and the staff, the staff technical advisory group. So, in March, we held a citywide bike tour, and we also created a demonstration separated bike lane so people could get the sense and the feel of what biking in a separated bike lane would be like. We also conducted a lot of outreach in June and July where we held over six events and spoke with over 150 people. So, the purpose of those events was to get a lot of community buy-in and feedback on the proposed bicycle network. So, the network that you see here really reflects a lot of the thinking and the nuance of what the community would like to see on the ground in San Mateo. And we also, I recognize a lot of you from the event, so we really appreciate you coming out and being involved and, yeah, sharing your thoughts as well. So, in addition to the community outreach, we really also had a data-driven analysis of what it's like to bike in San Mateo today and what's on the ground. So, we've conducted a level of traffic stress analysis that looks at the speeds, the vehicle speed and vehicle volumes on each of the roads in San Mateo. And we conducted this level of traffic stress that shows what the high-stress streets are and what the low-stress streets are for bicycling. We also conducted a needs and demand analysis where we looked at which areas of the city would most likely be high-demand areas for bicycling. So, this is going to be transit hubs, schools, and commercial areas. And then we also conducted a bicycle network analysis, which looked at the connectivity of the existing bicycle facilities and paired that with the level of traffic stress to kind of give us a picture of where we could really implement improved or new bicycle facilities to make a really large impact on the number of folks who make bicycle and use these facilities. So, as you'll see before you, there are, in the bicycle network, there are six proposed facility types. So, these range from a bicycle boulevard, which are really key for neighborhood streets. This will include signage and traffic calming treatments. Then to a typical bike lane, a buffered bike lane, which uses paint to separate bicyclists from vehicles. And then up to the most protected facility, which is a separated bike lane. And that provides a physical separation between bicyclists and vehicles. And then also shared use paths, which are shared by both pedestrians and bicyclists. So, I think at this point, I will be turning it over to Sue Ellen.
All right. So, taking the community engagement that we did, the data analysis that the Tool staff conducted, and the different bike types of bike facilities that are in a toolbox for this type of project, we came up with this proposed bicycle network that we're here to discuss tonight. We heard a lot in the community, and I think that we know just being in the community, that we need more connectivity in terms of east-west and north-south routes for bicyclists. You might notice that there's no one type of facility that goes all the way east-west and north-south in the city. And that's because, based on the data-driven approach, we're focused on a bike network that has a continuous level of comfort for a rider, not a continuous type of facility. So, the facilities are really best fit for each type of roadway so that a cyclist or user will continue to feel very comfortable the entire stretch of their route. This network, you know, from the outset, we said we wanted to focus on connectivity and up to jobs, to transit, to housing, recreation, and schools. We really wanted something that was achievable but that pushed the bike network in San Mateo to be a little more innovative than it is right now. Just to orient you on this map that you also have in front of you, and we'll go into a little more in depth later, the solid lines are those facilities that are existing, and then all of the dashed lines are the proposed facilities. And you'll also see small open circles, and those identify intersections that need improvement. Often intersections are left out of a bike network, but that can often be the most uncomfortable or stressful part of a bike ride. And so, we really wanted to focus on that full level of comfort from start to finish. One of the really great skills that Tool has brought to this is their expertise in phasing projects. So, this bike network really looks out five to seven years in the future. And the projects that are on the map won't go in immediately. But what we can do under Tool's guidance is we can phase in projects, so we don't have to immediately implement a separated bike lane. But rather, we can initially do an improvement with paint and plastic, and then over time, as funding and interest are available, we can increase to that full separated bike lane with the physical separations. So, Tool really brings expertise in this area of rapid implementation and phasing in projects over time that give us opportunity to get a portion of the bike network on the road in the near term and then phase it in over time. So, in looking at the proposed bike network, there were a few potential projects that questions came up recently, so we wanted to call them out. For the Fiesta Gardens and Bay Meadows neighborhood, we were looking at ways to provide access into the Fiesta Gardens neighborhood to the new 28th Avenue Caltrain Station. Caltrain is moving from, the Hillsdale Caltrain Station is moving from near 31st to 28th. And we wanted to be able to provide direct access now that it's moving a little bit more north. So, we examined two options as part of this proposed bike network. The first was the bike path along the Creek Trail that residents are currently using. It's an unpaved path that comes out onto a sidewalk at Saratoga. And the second was a bike and pedestrian portal that would only be wide enough for bikes and peds through the sound wall connecting directly to 28th Avenue. The preferred option and the option that's included in the proposed bike network is that bike and pedestrian portal through the sound wall. That was chosen because it provides direct signal-controlled access at 28th Avenue that would provide a direct connection to the 28th Avenue Caltrain Station or Hillsdale Caltrain Station. It's cost-effective to improve the connectivity for the neighborhood. If we were looking at the bike route along the creek, we would have to pave, we would have to install new lighting. There would have to be an improvement in terms of getting bicyclists across at Saratoga. There's currently a median where that bike trail connects at Saratoga. So, we would have to do some thinking in how to safely get fixed to 28th Avenue. And we would also have to consult with San Mateo Police Department on security concerns along that trail. It also would provide, having the portal access would provide additional bike and pedestrian access for the Fiesta Gardens International School, which is not a neighborhood school, so we have children from all over the city who are accessing that school. For this particular project, we would want to be conducting specific neighborhood outreach prior to finalizing this plan, but wanted to mention it in particular. Another project that we received questions about was the crossing for Hillsdale at 101, which we've heard a lot about in this outreach, about comfort and safety. In the 2011 plan, a separated Hillsdale bike head bridge was identified and included in that plan. That design has not been funded for design or construction at this time. So, we asked Tool to examine an alternate option for the interim timeframe to utilize the existing infrastructure at the Hillsdale over crossing, which they have. We opted to include both in the plan so that we had our interim short-term option available to us, but we still have the separated bike head bridge in the hopefully final plan so that we are competitive for funding options for that project. So, currently, Tool staff and city staff are working on a prioritized project list, an implementation and funding strategy, which we were very clear was very necessary for this plan. Conceptual projects sheets, which will be more detailed project designs for 10 to 15 of the top priority projects so that we can hit the ground running on those and be more competitive in terms of funding from the get-go with those projects. And on the draft written plan, it's not just a map, there's a lot of support programs and documentation and written material that goes into the plan. So, this is the schedule as it's been over the last year. As you can see, we've made it through quite a lot of this plan, and as noted, we're at the implementation strategy and project prioritization portion. We're also doing environmental review for the bike network right now, and we expect to be back in front of City Council in February with a final plan for review and adoption. So, with that, we are excited to talk through the bike network with you. You all have PDFs, or sorry, crankups at your stations, and we also can zoom in on a map on the screen for specific questions. But we're really excited to have that conversation with you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you go back to the map that shows the pass-through the sound wall at Saratoga and Fiesta Gardens?
Yeah.
I think Rich Hedges might be the only guy here that remembers in 2001 or 2 or 3 when we were studying the Bay Meadows and Transportation Corps, and it was suggested by somebody that we actually open up and allow cars to pass through there or maybe just allow people to pass through there. And all I can say is if you're gonna go talk to people there, you better wear your personal protective equipment because they violently rejected that because they thought that people will park there and walk through to the fairgrounds. And so, I'm not sure that's even an idea I would really look at.
I understand. We, I don't have personal protective gear, but I'm sure I can work on that. The circulation network has changed a bit since 2001. We now do have the Bay Meadows neighborhood, and we have the Hillsdale Caltrain Station that's moving up to 28th, providing that option to provide really direct bike and pedestrian access for that neighborhood and significantly cut down on the distance for them to access transit. So, we are happy to have that conversation. We understand the reservations. In terms of concerns with parking and users of the event center parking in that neighborhood, I think that there are mitigations that we could explore that other communities like Santa Clara and Palo Alto have explored for special events that could offset those parking concerns were this to go forward. So, I think that there are ways that we can have that discussion, and we're looking forward to it.
Really? Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead to that mayor committee.
Oh, sure.
I've had communication as recently as last, I am throughout the day with Rich now of that neighborhood who's, I think they're still pretty much opposed to this occurring for multiple reasons. So, we'll see how that communication goes, whether we even, you know, engage in a meeting or whether we do a survey or whether we just get a letter from the board that says, no way. So, we'll see how that goes, but my intent is not to be outselling a different color shirt for you guys to see a different color shirt in the audience than ready to talk about it, so I'm trying to.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
I just have one comment on that.
Speak, I listen.
I don't know if, I don't have any real evidence of this, I'm not making that case for or against the sound wall being cut through. But I was told by somebody that when Bay Meadows came in, that part of the agreement was that we couldn't legally open it. And so, I don't know, I don't know, is there any restriction on that or?
I don't recall whether there's a legal restriction on that. We can look into that.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I wondered, has this map been looked at by our police department in terms of any concerns they might have with any of the areas? Or like, since I know we received an email from Kelly Moran, who does a lot of bicycling, lives in Bay Meadows, and she felt us wanted her concerns of whether that might be a concern to the police department to open up Saratoga that side.
Two points on that. Again, for this specific project, for any project that's proposed here, we've done a lot of outreach for this plan, but these will be broken down into projects that will have their own community outreach strategy, and police would be consulted on any security concerns regarding any of the projects. But more broadly, the technical advisory group, the staff working group that Megan mentioned, was interdepartmental, and police and fire were a part of that group.
Okay. The other, I wanted to refer back to Kelly's email, she brought up quite a few points. She talked about Bays Road as being a route that's used quite a bit for folks to get from home to school into the southern part of town. Did you look at that road at all in terms of getting through Bay Meadows?
Yeah, we did look at, what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did look at Bays Road, so I think it's actually kind of like right at the bottom of that particular image.
So, can you show us where it is, Bays Road?
Not on that map necessarily. It's right, it runs from the park at 28th right through to Franklin Park. As you can see on this little map I've got.
So, this is, runs like right down, it's a street, right there.
Thank you. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's like near that, the vertical green line down there.
Okay.
So, yeah, we did, we did look into that, but then we ended up showing the existing path that's there as a good north-south connection, but that was considered a connection, not a, or a parallel to that.
Considered and rejected or?
Considered and then, yeah, it's, we ultimately decided on this, but it, you know, we can go back to it. But we, it was considered and then we ultimately decided that the shared use path.
Did anyone go out and actually look to see if people are using it as a bike route at this point in time?
The shared use path?
Bays, Bays Road?
Oh, Bays. We didn't do a specific trip for Bays Road.
We haven't done bike counts.
Might be, it might be a good idea. The only reason I say that is Kelly lives there, she and her husband bicycle a lot. I think she knows the area pretty well, so it might be worth taking a look at that.
And there were two, I interject here for a second, I have Kelly's.
Why don't you, let's take the public comment first, if I could hold you off just for a second. Why was it rejected, the Bays?
We chose the off-street facility for just being a more comfortable facility than a on-street facility.
I think one of the things that concerned me with the email was that if that's a private pathway, I don't think we could really designate it as part of our system. So, I think we need to take a look at a couple of concerns that were raised about that issue.
And is it, private pathway aside, is it wide enough?
That's the other thing, right?
It's not a road?
No, it's a pathway.
No, this pathway thing we're talking about, this shit, the pedestrian.
And I think it's not, it's a power of my breaking.
So, all right. Do you have more questions, more questions?
No, I'm good.
More questions? Okay. Were you guys done with your presentation or did you want to add a bit more to go through where we are?
We're done.
You were done? Okay. Did you have anything else to add?
No, good.
Okay, stay tuned. Okay. And now we'll open up to public comment.
So, just, just comment that specifically, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Michael Riggman's turned into speaker, so?
Okay, we'll get your name out there.
I'm sorry, we're interrupting, I'm sorry.
No, no, it isn't, we just, for the record, we got to get like exactly who speaks when, and we need you to.
And we need you in, and we need some good knowing, and we need you with the speaker.
Because the video doesn't pick you up.
Okay, go ahead.
Come on over, you just, all you have to do is talk in front of there, we just have to make a record for the public, that's all.
With regard to that specific path, yeah, the, that path is out of the way for bicyclists who normally use a north-south route through Bay Meadows, and Bays Road would be the appropriate way to do it. In fact, in the original route that we saw in Genus Lane, we had Bays Road there, so this is a change. And that path being a private path, I think is quite inappropriate. And for the most part, bicyclists want to do what motorists want to do or pedestrians want to do. They want to go the most direct way through a particular area, and that's the way to go, is Bays Road.
Did you have anything else to add about any other part of the map or the comments while you're at?
I have some general comments later.
Downs and downs, please.
Okay.
Could you state your name for the record too?
My name is Mark Elliott, and I live in, on 28th Avenue in Bay Meadows.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of general comments. This plan, and specifically the route map associated with it, is really ambitious, which I think is good in a general sense, but I'm concerned about being able to actually implement this. Years ago, I was involved in the 2011 bike plan, and not a lot of the projects that were in that plan were never really implemented. And a big part of that is the city's commitment, I guess, to supporting bicycle projects. An awful lot of the projects that we do put in the ground are funded through grants, through CCAG and whatnot, and that's, you know, in the order of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. And a lot of these projects we're looking at, especially the separated paths, are quite expensive and take a fair amount of engineering effort to do. So, it's more of a challenge, I guess, at the city council. Are you committed to putting the money in to actually seeing this, this plan completed? To do that, I think you're gonna have to dip into the general fund to do it or potentially use development fees for developers. And it's gonna take a lot more money than we have historically put in. So, I think unless we do that, it's kind of a fantasy. The second point I'd like to make is, within the city, we really need someone who is committed to seeing the plan through. Bicycle coordinators, we usually call that in the city. And we haven't had that person here for quite a while. So, creating a position for that person in Public Works to actually take responsibility for the plan and follow it through, go for the funding sources, and kind of making it happen, a champion, if you will, in the city, is quite important. So, without those two things, I think a lot of this is going to be just kind of aspirational, just a general concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we had one other speaker, so please come forward. This just picks you up on the video, that's why we have to have you speaking over here, even though Brad didn't talk in this.
I saw that.
My name is Michael Reagan.
It's okay, yeah, just speak as you would, thank you. It'll pick you up.
Okay, fine. As Mark said, we're both on the bicycle committee, along with Sue Ellen, and so we've been truly invested in seeing this project through. He said it more eloquently than I could say it, so I concur with what he was saying. A few other points, as far, well, just to bring back Fiesta Gardens. Actually, I was, I lived in Fiesta Gardens, and at the time when Bay Meadows plan came through, the first phase, I was actually on the board, actually the president at Fiesta Gardens. So, I know the difficulty of trying to get that, anything opening there. You've got to understand the difficulty of living in that area, trying to even get in there, there's only two ways in, so it's very difficult. So, in a sense, the only risk that they have in their area is that sense of cultist sacrilege type of lifestyle. So, to open it up, it would be true, people would park, go in it, and so it would be difficult. So, I think you should propose it to them and then work a bike route around the area, you know, through Delaware and such. So, you can hook it up with Delaware and such like that, and give them the option and maybe lay the plans down for them. And maybe eventually, you know, the changing in the population down there, people will, you know, be more interested in seeing a more direct route to the train station and to the other facilities that it would provide. And then as far as personally, right now, I live on 31st Avenue. I was the head of that traffic committee that you guys put together several years ago. And what I was hoping is, a project that's already kind of in the works is the 28th Avenue Bike Route, which is from the Bearsford Park down to El Camino. And that's kind of been already in the works, at least that's what I've been told by the Public Works. And I think that would be a great place to start. It hooks up the train station, it would be kind of a way to get into it. But as Mark said, you know, we realized when we sat down on this committee how difficult and how much money and that type of thing. Would have been easier to develop a city with a bike route already in, you know, in place, but you're kind of putting something in. But I think what we're trying to get at is that if we look into the future, I think having a bike route. My son actually works for a scooter company, and they have, he came from Chicago, he's in Oakland right now. He's going to San Jose, and they're implementing these scooter programs throughout these different parts of these cities. And I think that's the up-and-coming thing. When you're stuck in bumper-to-bumper traffic on Hillsdale, if you can be on a scooter or a bike and get back and forth to work, I think that would be something that you guys should think about as far as, you know, into the future to really get behind. And I think the money would be pretty well spent in doing that type of thing. So, hopefully, we can get this thing going off, you know, get going, and financially, I know it would be a huge investment, but I think it would be a good investment, so thanks.
Thank you, sir. It is a public comment?
In other sense.
Okay. So, we will bring it back to the council for comments.
I take a little question instead.
Would you like to go, some more questions, please, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Regarding some of the questions raised by the public, I thought they were, they were pretty interesting. In terms of funding this, had you thought at all about like what it's gonna cost and, you know, like there's phases? And like how do we make this not a dream and more of a reality?
If I could just subtitle on that, do you have a ballpark for what it costs to do a shared use as opposed to a bike lane, as opposed to a buffered lane or a bike route?
Yes.
Because as I kind of see your plan, we're gonna, to use your words, Councilor Rodriguez, to phase in some of these lanes.
Right.
So, it won't be, you know, a buffered lane right away.
That's right.
Right, so do you have some estimate of cost, what it costs per 100 feet or whatever, how does it work?
Yeah, yeah, so both really good questions. So, to speak to Councilmember Rodriguez's question first, the plan will include a funding strategy. And so, what, we've actually drafted it, and it includes different opportunities for grants at the local, regional, and county-wide scale. It also offers opportunities to tie in with your paving program and with your capital improvements program. So, a lot of the opportunities for maybe buffered bike lanes, which is really paint, or initial separated bike lanes, which could be paint and posts, can really be tied into a lot of the work that the city does on an ongoing basis as a part of street maintenance. As a part of the plan, we will be developing cost estimates for each of the projects. So, what we're working on right now is putting those cost estimates together. So, I am not able to say off the top of my head how much exactly a bike lane costs, but we, our engineering team is putting those cost estimates together and will be a part of the plan that you will see when it comes back to you in February. And something that I wanted to mention and to tie into what Sue Ellen said is that this plan is ambitious, but this is what's gonna get folks to bike in San Mateo. A lot of first and second-generation plans, proposed facilities that just don't move the needle on bicycling. And so, that's why we're very excited about this plan, that this is truly what will get parents and older folks and all ages out on the bicycle network. And we did, in addition to thinking what will get people to bike, we also did think about implementation. So, I just wanted to emphasize the point that Sue Ellen said, that's why you don't see a separated bike lane throughout. So I just wanted to emphasize the point that Sue Ellen said, that's why you don't see a separated bike lane throughout the, like, as a backbone spine, because they are more expensive and it's um, all of the recommendations here are very context sensitive, so we looked at every street there that is proposed with a bike facility and thought about the speeds and thought about the traffic volumes, so that we're proposing something that's quite realistic um to both implement and also get people to bike. So that's why um you do see so many colors on this map, is that it's, we took a very nuanced look um and did try to keep in mind funding um as a part of this. And uh the plan will also include an implementation section that will talk about phasing and um different partnerships that that the Public Works Department can build in order to get this implemented.
And and one other question I had, um, that was also raised by a a speaker was with this idea of making sure we have a champion and there's some continuity. Um, you know, I don't know if we could spend the resources on a dedicated person on that, or I guess I'd be able to give it to you, right? So do we have, are are you kind of the dedicated champion right now, the prime person? How how is it working out, and how do you intend it to work?
Yeah, so um we've actually, uh, council's approved a upgrade as Sue Ellen's position, uh she is a transportation planning manager rather than just a parking manager we had before. And then we've converted uh in a, what we had before as a transportation uh planning associate. So we believe those two positions, you know, they take care of parking as well, but are really focused on the interaction between um our capital group and also community development, and making sure we can make some of these ha- things happen either through our capital program or working through with the developers as well. It'll also be part of um the the traffic impact fee upgrade that we're gonna do, because that's one of my goals, is to try to put the, any of these projects on that list so that we can actually generate some additional money, not just rely on grants, because if the speakers are right, it'd take a long time for us to rely on those measures.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I have a question for Brad.
Yeah.
Brad, do we have any funding set aside already for any portions of this plan, or are we gonna do the plan and then go out and look at how we're gonna get the funding?
Um, we've been uh trying to to just get the grants that are available to us through CCAG or the TAs, so those have been our measures so far. And that's been based on the current plan that we have in existence, so this'll just be uh a new work that we need to try and achieve and try to find some some additional funding for. But that that's the biggest challenge is finding the money for that. But I think trying to tie some of our paving projects and some of the capital projects we have ongoing and making sure we're taking care of all the needs at one time rather than, you know, piecemeal, uh like an opportunity for us to make some progress.
Okay.
Yeah, I may, uh, yes, I.
Okay, I remember, thank Brad, um, question. Uh, at one point, we were talking about doing some kind of a path along the sixteenth Avenue Canal. Is that still in the works somehow or?
Um, I think that has some challenges with it. Uh, I know the police department is very concerned with putting a path there because of the potential for crime and the different things happening back there, cause it is very, very hidden. So I think that's the main reason we're we're not really pursuing it at this time. There are some other challenges with residents that would be backed up to that pathway as well, whether or not they would want that. Um, it's a great idea, but I think right now, as far as implementation, it has some too much challenges.
It's the worst in the alley behind my house.
Right.
But I get it, oh, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I would like to say, I know Councilor Rodriguez and I went on the um
Tour.
Tour, thank you. And it was a real eye-opener, because I do concur that uh there are different points in the city that have different needs. So when we came along twentieth Avenue and went down that sort of commercial area, that was far different than going over the freeway uh in the northern part of the city. So um while ambitious, it seems that the focus i- it's, you know, you're honing in on what you can do where, rather than let's just create a whole bunch of bypass throughout the city. So I appreciate that you're trying to tailor different strategies for different contextual context, right? Um, so I I'm happy to see that and and nothing happens without a plan. Ambitious or not, nothing happens without a plan, so finance-wise. So I'm 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 pleased to see what I I see so far, and I appreciate that it is contextual, cause it was far different when we were on the bike, definitely. You know, some things accommodated us pretty well, they weren't perfect, other things were like, you know, white knuckle take your life in your hands, so I get it. But I I I, yes, certainly.
Another question? Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to be thorough here. Another point that was made in Kelly Moran's letter was uh letter D. And she's talking about the map showing two bridges crossing one-on-one, right? And I know one is actually Hilldale Boulevard, and the other one is the proposed pedestrian bicycle bridge. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, with uh, we haven't had really good fortune with with uh getting some funding for the the separated overcrossing at this point in time, so that we've been considering maybe using utilizing some uh some of the width on the existing structure to create some separate bike lanes, so that we can um you know, have a little bit safer transport than we do today. So that that's kind of the idea behind that. So again, one of the things that I did like about how the plan was developed is the opportunity to kind of do things uh sequentially, you know, not to go for the Cadillac right away, so you could do
Right.
uh something a little bit less um to get things going and then kind of build towards that, towards that uh the idea that you actually wanted eventually, so.
So it probably should be beyond the map then?
Uh.
Well, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm in a, in most of the facilities, the phase approach isn't real, isn't shown as different options, because it's in the same location. For this one, the existing facility goes directly across along Hilldale, and that's our first, you know, near-term measure, physicalization.
Yeah, that's the answer I'll put right now.
It is, and we have ideas for how to make that better on the existing facility that we have. But the alignment for the proposed bike head bridge is different, so we do need to show both facilities so that that bike head bridge can still be in the hopefully final adopted plan and be eligible for funding.
Got it.
Okay, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
I see where they are now, yes, or or did you wanna go?
It's fine. I was, yeah, I was just gonna comment, sorry.
Uh, no, I don't I don't have any other, um, I do have one other question. Um, based on um Ms. Moran's um email, she talked about the pedestrian-only privately-owned paths at the borders between Bay Meadows and Franklin Templeton, and that they have inadequate width, width, and neither property owner wants bikes on them. So have you actually talked to property owners about that?
Um, for, sorry, hold on.
I, yeah, I think that, I mean, this is the first question in that. Um, we we have not had conversations with the private property owners, but um I will say that all of our review,
Yeah, yeah.
we do, we have not proposed a facility here that that is not um engineer, is, has not been reviewed for its feasibility to be implemented. So um wherever you see these facilities, we have determined that there is the appropriate roadway, or we've suggested measures um to implement the facilities. Um, at this point, I I don't believe that we've had specific conversations with private property owners, um but we would be welcome to their feedback into incorporating that as a part of the plan.
Okay, to be explored, yeah. Okay, Councilor.
Okay, just a a couple of comments. So I really like how ambitious this this bike plan is. Um, I specifically um appreciate how uh a couple of times when I was on the bike tour and I did feel, uh, I guess, use, uh, Mayor Poppins where his white knuckle scared him and my son as well.
You have your kid with you.
My uh, well, it, I I see the red, um, the 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 separated bike lanes where those spots were, one of them was like at Concar, anywhere near Concar
Mm-hmm.
in in ninety-two in in the overpass, and then also on Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue, and and then also um it it's also interesting, the the intersection treatments as well, where are those areas where I I really feel
Mm-hmm.
least safe, especially when I'm going from my home to Central Park, I don't feel comfortable taking my son on his bike yet because of crossing over communities, it's fairly challenging, and I'm sure
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I'm not the only one there. Um, so I would just en- encourage you as you're building out this ambitious plan to to also keep in mind how I feel like you are, uh, how we're gonna fund it and making sure that it's it's all feasible. And um and lastly, I would just say, I think you're gonna get a lot of feedback from from various residents that know this this area really, or know their their respective areas really well, especially like down in Bay Meadows, and I just encourage you to really s- talk with, talk with them, try to learn as much as you can.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't think they have any motives other than just trying to come up with the best plan possible. So, um, I I know that you just came up with this, and then you're getting all these reactions in, and it's
That's right.
it's hard to kind of react to them all a couple days before, and the public kind of, um, but as you do move forward, uh, I think it will be your friends and and your alafrum, so I just.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Okay, yeah. I think I have before my comments, maybe one last question. Uh, because I suspected that when I saw this, that just like any other kind of large ambitious plan, it would be phased, phases take time, I think we'll see funding as phases uh uh um are uh proposed. Um, but I'm wondering, how long do you think it would take to complete all this work?
Mm-hmm. Great question. Um, so uh before I answer that specific question, I do wanna say that Suel mentioned we're also developing a prioritized bicycle list. So, or bicycle project list. So um this will provide um you with city council and the city staff with um a sense of which projects are the highest, medium, and maybe lowest priorities. Um, and it's based on a a a variety of factors, which um we include the prioritization criteria in the plan, so it's very transparent about how these projects were prioritized. So that will also help you really um narrow your focus on um which projects to seek grant funding, to implement using your um pavement program to implement with um development fees and funds like that. Um, with these, with these projects, it it can depend. So some of these projects um could be implemented with paint, and those could be done in the next year or six months to a year or two years. Um, some projects um are gonna maybe require um uh further honed engineering designs, so that might take a little bit more time. And then other, sort of the larger scale ones, um may take five or ten years. But those are the very, very large capital improvement projects. Um, bicycle bicycle plans are typically updated every five years, and so um I think that that would be something to keep in mind, is to um be ambitious yourselves, and think about how how much of this network and what pieces of this network could could the city really implement within the next five years. Um, and uh again, phasing is an excellent way to go about this. So for the separated bike lanes, you could really start with paint and posts, and then over time, uh move to more uh physical buffers for the separation. So there are opportunities um throughout, but it kind of depends on the project, and um the prioritized project list will help give you a good sense of that.
Okay, thanks. Another question?
Uh, how, yeah, how do you develop your prioritized lists? Is it based on observation, is is it where there's the greatest need near TOD?
Yeah.
Traffic backup, that that type of thing?
That's a great. It's a great, uh, that's a great question. So um what we develop, we call it prioritization framework. So it's um it's, the first part of it is very data-driven, and so um we have uh developed a scale of um zero to forty. And it it's all tied back to the goals that we mentioned. So um there's cri- criteria for um connectivity, for comfort, um equity and ridership. Community is is more of a, is more programmatic and also kind of intertwined with all the others. And so um we're looking at which networks are uh or which which proposed bikeways are um gonna offer, going to offer the most connected, connected, comfort, comfortable um facilities. And then also, um, with the equity, these which neighborhoods um may most, would most benefit from bicycle improvements, or may have um not historically had bicycle improvements in the past. Um, so uh as a part of the plan, the criteria will be, like I said, will be a part of the plan. But then after we develop it, um, it's it's all based on a code that we write as a part of our um GIS, our mapping system. But then um we also take a human look at it. So um our our consultant team along with city staff will be um meeting actually this week to take a look at what we've proposed and to say, does this really feel right to the city? So we match the analytics with the human touch of um of uh thinking through the projects. And so, but it is, it is a data-driven process, um so uh that can be beneficial, cause then you have a very clear sense of how these projects rise to the top.
Mm-hmm. Just one last question, based on something that Mr. Reagan said, which was about scooters.
Mm-hmm.
And I I don't think San Mateo is ready yet for scooters, but would would bike lanes be where scooters would eventually be, and will these be planned to accommodate for any future needs?
That's right. So there was actually, um, your city has been, and your city staff and your community has been very thoughtful about how to plan for micro-mobility and shared micro-mobility into the future. And there's also conversations about um how to incorporate this in the title, and what we what we ended on is that um scooters and bike share and other, and maybe forms of micro-mobility that we don't even know of yet, evolved so quickly, that um they will be able to be served in the bicycle network. So um right now, the guidance um from the state and best practices is that scooters use the bike lanes. And so um the facilities that you see here will be able to accommodate scooters and um any, and well, in future micro-mobility, is the, is the thought with that, yes. And if I could add on to that, um, under state law or um California vehicle code, scooters are not allowed on sidewalks, they're supposed to be in the roadway. Yeah. And that's one area where we don't, we don't have a lot of facilities where scooters can be right now, along with, we don't have a lot of scooter, a lot of facilities for bikes right now. Um, so that has been really, there have been a lot of discussions about that, but we have designed this with all types of wheeled mobility devices. Um, plus those, like Megan said, we don't even know about yet.
Reports?
Hmm?
So.
Reports.
So I received a couple of communications asking, actually, maybe this is Kathy's, for updates on the um bike and scooter uh moratorium and uh shared uh, you know.
Actually, so I'm gonna mention.
Okay, so.
Yeah, um, so it, city council adopted the shared mobility permit program in June, May, somewhere around there. Um, and that permit program included one permit for a bike share operator. We did release the bike share operator application over the summer, and we did not receive any applications. Uh, so we do need to reconvene and determine what our next steps are there. Uh, but we do have that permit application available, we have the structure of the program, and the municipal has it updated uh to pertain to shared mobility devices.
Okay, and then do I recall like a moratorium on scooter, uh, shared scooter usage?
Right, the uh updates that were made to the municipal code made it unlawful to operate a shared mobility device in the public right-of-way without a permit. And then a permit was only offered for one bike share operator.
Right.
So a um scooter operator could not obtain a permit, therefore would not be permitted to operate in the public right-of-way.
Not yet.
For now, but do we have any thinking about what may change at some point?
For now. I think that would be a question for city council probably. Um, but we would, we haven't reconvened uh about the bike share application, and we do need to do so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have another question, yeah.
Um, I'll just add briefly, it's all been said, I agree with uh my colleagues, uh, I appreciate the very ambitious plan, I look forward to elevating our.
Yeah, I I, you know, I was in Portland, Oregon earlier today, and they have a lot of bike paths, whatnot, and and I, as as traffic becomes, as we all know, more and more of a burden for us to deal with on the council, I I will say that the priority of of developing bike plan, both developing it and funding it, will rise to the top a bit more, including tapping into our general plan. But um, public comment is closed unfortunately, but maybe we could get your comments later in person. Okay, yes, sure.
Can I, I just, I I just wanna comment, that I like the fact that it's an ambitious plan and that there's better connectivity east and west, but I also like the fact you are looking at future mobility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that that's part of this plan, because I think we need to include all methods of transportation, especially if we're gonna get people out of cars and using alternative modes of getting around. So um um I hope that we can stay on top of it, because there's nothing worse than passing a plan and nothing happens, so I think this needs to be one of those priorities as we move forward. So, thank you for the work you've done on it.
So I just, I just wanna add that I am encouraged by the plan, I look forward to a full implementation of a functional uh uh bicycle uh infrastructure.
I'll see you out there. And who's the comment, yes?
Mayor P, ma- yes, can I make a, just a
Yeah.
a comment about the funding. So one of the one of council's strategic priorities for for the current fiscal year is for us to consolidate all of our master planning efforts to address the funding issue. So on on one hand, I I agree, you can't get to a vision, you know, without setting it, and and but on the other hand, um, we have, I think, ten or eleven master planning efforts either in place or underway. And in some cases like like this one, there are some really viable funding sources, like grant funds, like potentially adding adding it to the TIF or or im- implement. like potentially adding adding it to the T I F or or implementing some with our roadway work. There are other master planning efforts where we have no funding identified. Um, and so we want to bring that forward with some high level cost estimates and and where we are because I do think we will need some direction on where we should go with some of those efforts and where we should really put our focus if if we're not gonna be able to do everything.
So you're saying these other ones might not have grant uh money available, is what you just said?
That's right. There's others that would be, that would need to be general fund funded or going back out to the voters through a bond. So even with that, we probably wouldn't be able to fund everything. So we we'll need to get some direction, so we're bringing that back uh early in twenty twenty for council's consideration.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning. Cross our bridge when we come today. Or rob that then. Joe loves when I say that. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.